...of Appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The Secretary will read the legal notice or state that such a notice has been waived. All applications tonight will be heard in the order they were received in the City Clerk's office or as otherwise designated by the Chair. The petitioner or petitioner's representative will present the subject application to the Board. The Chair may limit the length of all remarks. All parties in interest will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition to a pending application, and the Board may receive similar written communications to be placed on the public record. How many people here tonight? This is your first time coming before the zoning Board. Okay. So, very quickly, what I just said was, when it's your turn, you or your attorney or your builder come up to the podium, put on the little red button so we can hear you, state your name and address for the record, and then tell us why you're here. We have an idea why you're here, but we want to hear it from you and your reasons why. Stick to the subject, please. You are here for dimensional relief. You are not here to tell us what lousy neighbors you have or your family background. You're here for a variance, and we want to know what that's all about. When you're done, I will then ask, we'll ask you some questions if we have any. I will then ask if there is anyone in the audience to speak in favor or in opposition to what you're doing. If you happen to be one of those people right now this evening, come up to the podium, say your name and address for the record, and once again, state concrete, clear reasons why you're for it or against it. It comes, becomes a little tricky when you're against or you oppose your neighbor's variance because you like to get into the personalities of the, your neighbor, and we don't want to hear that. So, I haven't had to do this for a while, but I might do this, and that means, uh-uh. Let's move on. At the end of that, you can come back up to the podium if need be, or your attorney, and talk about what was said. At that point, the Board then closes the hearing and we take a vote. I say this every meeting, but it's true. Not everything can be approved. If everything was to be approved, then there would be no reason for us to come here once a month and listen to what you would like to build. So, the zoning Board and the zoning laws of Massachusetts are there to be abided by. They have to be tweaked a little bit if you want to build something that's a little larger, and we understand that, but not everything does get approved. So, after all of that, and we make, we vote, the decision then is typed and filed with the City Clerk, and once the decision is filed with the City Clerk, you have a 20-day waiting appeal period. And tomorrow, everybody that's here, if you have questions, Ms. McGrath, our, I hate to call you a clerk, our assistant will get in touch with you. Please speak directly into the microphone clearly and only speak when you're at the podium. Oh, yes, that's right. I also have to remind you, I don't think it's going to happen tonight, but when we have a very full auditorium, somebody gets up to speak, they go back and sit down, they remember they want to say something else, or they don't like what somebody is saying and they want to speak from their seat. It's just for politeness and to keep order. Please don't do that. If you have to say something else, just come back up. And I believe that's it. So, any questions? Great. We are going to start with number one, which is a continued application for 10 Bassford Court.
Thank you, members of the Board of Appeals. My name is John Kelty, and I'm an attorney. I practice law at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts, and I appear in this instance for Leo Alemgie, who purchased property at 10 Bassford Court in August of 2021, and he bought it as Improved Home Solution LLC. When he looked at the listing, the listing had suggested that this had been a two-family home as early as 1970. When I had, as recently as 1970, when I examined records at the, at the assessor's office, I saw no evidence of the fact that it had ever been assessed as a two. However, I, Mr. Alemgie found himself buying a property that was built in 1910. There were six bedrooms on the, on the, there were six bedrooms. There were two full baths. There were eight rooms total, six bedrooms and one family room and one kitchen. There are two kitchens shown on the plans that I submitted with you, and-
Excuse me, now I have to interrupt. I'm very, very sorry, Attorney Kelty. However, you did pass in a, a late correspondence, a revised plan, but this was not received in the time that, in a timely fashion, so basically, it was received late. Now, the zoning Board rules were revised, and everybody knows this, November 16, 2021, stating that all information has to be received no later than 12 days before the hearing date. You were made aware of this. Attorney Von Zalidis missed that chapter, but he knows about it now. The revised rules were emailed to everybody December of 2021. So, you can continue with, with your presentation, Attorney Kelty, but we cannot make any reference to your late correspondence. You can either request a continuance or continue on without referring to that revised plan. I'm very sorry, but we have to stick to the rules. Late is late. Whether it's a day late, 12 days late, or an hour late, it's late. I'm sorry.
It's fine. Well, I'm going to continue.
Okay.
So, the home was built in 1910. The assessor's records show six bedrooms, a family room, a kitchen, and two full baths. When Mr. Alemgie purchased the property, he had an architect recite what the existing conditions were in the, in the dwelling, and they show on the plan that we filed some time ago with the initial application. And the existing first floor is a kitchen, living room, bath, and two bedrooms. The second floor is another kitchen, a living room, dining room area with a bath and one bedroom, and then there are three bedrooms on the third floor. Those all are shown on the plan that was filed initially without referencing the plan that you've referenced earlier. We have done an examination of the utilization of properties on the street. On the other side of the street, there are numbers 5, 7, 9, and 11 are all single-family homes. On our side of the street, numbers 6, 8 are two-family. Out on School Street, there is a four-family and a two-family, and we are located in our four zoning district. My variance request is to allow for the property to be converted, making utilization of the two kitchens. We have filed with you the proposed plan, which would be two condominiums. The first unit on the first floor would be kitchen, living room, bath with two bedrooms, and the second unit would be two floors. And on the second floor would be kitchen, living room, bath, one bedroom, and three bedrooms and a full bath would be located on the third floor, resulting in two condominium units being offered to the public, provided we are granted this variance. Something that I'd like to point out was that we are willing to make the parking area that we showed on the plan filed with the, with the Board. We are willing to show four parking spaces, bring them closer to the building, which would allow people to back out of those spaces and back into the street and exit Bassford Court facing forward. Currently, there are, at least my client on occasion, he has a larger truck, he quite often backs out of the street. One of the issues leading to the narrowness of the street, at the end of the street, is that there is, the house located directly across from us, 11 Bassford Court, over the course of time, was apparently a piece of land in the front, which used to be part of Bassford Court, was abandoned. We have no objection to the fact that that happened. That certainly happened well before Mr. Alemgie purchased this property, but it does make the narrowness of the street. If you look at any of the plans that were filed with the, with the application, you'll see that Bassford Court on the other side of the street, Eastern Land Survey shows curb, and then he shows the property lines. At the very end of Bassford Court, that area between the curb and the property line is lost. That's the area that was abandoned, and our neighbor's front porch is actually right, literally, right on the street, making snow storage or the like in front of that house difficult, and it will make turning around somewhat difficult. But be that as it may, that's an existing condition that my client finds himself being confronted with. So, we're happy to make our parking lot bigger, bring it closer to, bring it closer to our porch. The dotted lines that show on the plan are the existing, the existing extended pavement. They show on the original plan as dotted lines. That is an area that people referenced was cut out, and parking provided. That area we're proposing will be enlarged, and we will provide sufficient parking for parking spaces for the, for the proposed two-unit building. We believe that this is a use consistent with the zoning district. As you recall, the zoning district is R4. Zoning district is the district that had allowed the construction of the condominiums on both sides of Lowell Street and also the condominiums that are down off of Crown and Shield Street. This entire area is zoned multifamily, R4, and as such, multiple unit structures are allowed in the, in the zoning district. However, we are asking for variance to allow a two-family in a R4 zoning district. R4 provides that units must provide 30, a minimum of 30,000 square feet, coupled with 750 square feet per bedroom. We've called out what the math would require for the number of bedrooms in, that we're proposing, and so we've asked for variance that would allow for the two-unit structure to be refurbished. There is no change to the exterior. The deck that had been mentioned two meetings ago, that deck is located, that's an existing deck that was built some years ago. I had thought erroneously at our last meeting that, that that was being added. That is not, that's an existing deck that is on the second floor of the premises, and we're more than happy to answer questions that you may have this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Do, did the applicant pull a permit through DPS for the curb cut?
I think this is Leo Alemgie.
Hi, my name is Leo Alemgie. I call for the, I went to the city. They gave me the detailed information from the inspector to call Jim, Mr. Jimmy Nicholas with the numbers 978-532, 536-7115. I did call him. He did the search, and he told me there is no curb on the street, on my, on my property, on the, on my property line, there's no curb. So, I don't have to pull a permit or pay any fee for a curb cut because there is no curb. And I have pictures that shows there is no curb. Before, I created the driveway, there is no curb existing there and on the plot plan the surveyor did. There is no curb. The curb starts from number, number eight Bassford Court. The curb ends at number eight Bassford Court. It doesn't continue to, to my property.
Which is number 10.
Which is number 10.
Do, I need to refer to Kyle. Do you know anything about the curb? Okay, so it's, so Building Department says a permit needs to be pulled, and it wasn't. Okay. Next question. To me, the parking doesn't work. I don't know why you're squeezing four parking spaces here where, to me, it doesn't work at all. Why didn't you just ask for relief?
Because my client wanted to take his, his cars off of the street. He's aware, since he's owned it since last August, he's very aware of the somewhat tight condition down there, and as such, he wanted to provide parking while he worked on the, on the building, and at the same time, while, when he finished with the renovation, he, in rehabilitation of the premises, he wanted there to be enough parking. So, that's why we didn't ask for relief.
Okay, anybody else?
Through the Chair, Attorney Kelty. So, the, the existing footprint for the building and the deck, those, those are current?
No, I think it's the one.
Yes.
Okay.
So, and the footprint for the building is not going to change?
Not changing at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you need the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none, the matter is before the Board.
I would suggest that if, when it gets put to a vote, that there's a condition that at least a permit for the curb cut be applied for, so it can be determined whether it would be necessary or not. Okay? Because there seems to be some confusion.
Worst case, Building Department says, no, you don't need it.
Right.
Then we have it.
That's, that's my feeling.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Anybody?
Second.
Second.
A motion to approve with the condition that a permit must be applied for with the Building Department with respect to the curb cut.
The curb.
Okay. So, it'll be a, it'll be a motion to allow with the condition that the permit be pulled for a curb cut through DPW.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Keith.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Stephen.
Yes.
Brian.
No.
And that's all that were eligible, correct? Thank you.
Number two is Continued of Sherri Lee Lane.
Good evening. Just for the record, my name is Ethan Von Zalidis. I'm an attorney with offices at 246 Andover Street in Peabody. I am here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. DeVasentis originally applied for a variance to allow his cabana to remain with 498 square feet, and the Board made it very clear that he needs to come back with some revisions to that proposal. So, he had his surveyor prepare two different plans. The first plan that I submitted showed a portion of the structure actually being cut off, but with all the excessive overhangs remaining, and it still would leave the cabana with 328 square feet, which I think is more area than what I can get from four members of the Board. If you look at the other plan, if we leave the cabana, it's just a pure rectangular building. We can be removing all the overhangs. We'd have a cabana that's only 266 square feet. I only have four eligible members to vote on this. I don't know if the 266 number is acceptable or whether we need to make any further compromises.
Well, can I interject?
You certainly may.
So, the first thing I want to say, and I, this is not just for your client, this is for everybody. This, I want to know why one would build something without a building permit. And don't tell me you didn't know, because I, I don't believe that. You know, this, I went by, many Board members went by. It is a huge structure. It looks basically completely finished, and there's no building permit that was pulled.
Yes. To truth be told, honestly, we had the pool permit. We had everything going on. Everything was just happening so fast, I didn't know, I honestly didn't know you needed a permit for a shed. My uncle was out of work, he started-
You called that a shed?
Well, cabana. My uncle was out of work, we got a deal on some wood, so he started, started going, and the more he went along, the more ideas we had. Well, this would be good if we did this, and then time, all the walls came up and everything, we said, oh, Jesus, I definitely got, I should have a building permit. I mean, just looking at it, because I didn't, I was out shopping for sheds, and obviously, if you was looking for sheds, the prices are through the roof. I didn't know, I thought they came and they dropped it off your house. I did not know you needed a building permit for a shed.
It's a pretty, pretty large-
I agree. I agree.
A very, very, I would call that more than a shed.
Shed cabana, yes. And like I said, didn't really know the size of it till it actually was built, and it's not really my forte, you know, I, I'm not a carpenter. I, when I saw it go up, I realized that it was a little bit too big.
You realized it, or did a building inspector come and realize it?
No, we realized it. I called, I called the building inspector. He came out, and he told me the steps I would have to take to get in front of you guys.
So, 200, this is, this is, these revised plans, so what, what was this for? We were supposed to pick the one we liked?
I only have four voting numbers. I need to keep you all happy. Trying to come up with a size in which the Board would approve. I thought 266 is pretty reasonable. You know, a cabana is supposed to be a structure where it has seating so people can change a little storage.
So, what 125 is the limit, is that correct?
120, 125.
120?
Which is, which is smaller than a shed, and they call it a cabana.
120. My personal feeling, after all is going on, after all is said and done, you revised it, that's not good enough for me.
Okay. Well, then, like I said, I need all four members. If we-
I'm being honest. I, you know, I'm on, we're on TV. I can't say what, I don't want you to think I am, but 266 for you, 270 for this one, 120 is what the zoning rules say. At the end of the day, you know, unless they increase the zoning square footage, we're bound by some sort of reasonable, and I know you own the land, it's your property, but that's life, and 266, just, you know, it, maybe you could just tweak it a little bit more.
That we can, and you said to be reasonable, and, and, you know, 120 square feet is basically 10 by 12. I mean, sheds are bigger than what we call a cabana.
I know, but you know, I don't make the rules.
I got you.
If I made the rules, I'd say, you know, make it two stories and invite me over, but, you know, what can I say?
All right. What if, let's just talk square footages, because that's the magic number. If I cut off three feet of the structure and remove all the overhangs, I end up with 228 square feet. That's a lot of removal.
I'm smiling.
You're smiling. I need all four members to smile.
I think that right around that double number is much more reasonable. Even if we're nitpicking a few feet here and there, as you know, if, if we do 260 for this one, and someone says, well, it's only 270, and then 270 becomes 280, next thing you know, we're-
I, I understand completely.
I think doubles are pretty good.
But if we could restrict this thing to no more than 228 square feet, it would be highly appreciated.
Does that mean that you're going to come back with, with something, or you're just going to do it?
No, because your variance decision is going to say the cabana shall not exceed 228 square feet.
I'm pretty good with that. Anybody else? Change the setback?
We have a, a larger setback than what was originally proposed, and ends up now we'll have a setback of, boy, my eyes are bad, of 8.0 versus the 7.2.
Comments by the Board? In the audience, anyone to speak for? Against? So, so this very large structure that was already built?
Is now going to be reduced.
So, you're just like cutting it and getting rid of it, right?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Make a motion to approve conditional upon the square footage not exceeding 228 square feet.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Vote.
Yeah, and a secondary condition that it be no closer than eight feet to the rear property line.
Second.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Keith.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Stephen.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Thank you. You too. Now, the next one you have to read in.
We have a correspondence on item number three on the agenda. It is stated as followed. I am requesting a continuance to May 16 for 30 Glenn Drive in regards to the permit for pool cabana, and it is signed by the applicant's-
Paul Dusablon.
Yes. Paul, yeah, Paul Dusablon. Dusablon, yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the correspondence and continue to the next meeting, May 16.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we're looking at number four, the Logan Express.
Item number four is an application of Logan Express, care of attorney David Anklees, for a variance from the provisions of the zoning ordinance 2020 as amended, Section 11.5.1, as it applies to the premise known as 210 Andover Street in Peabody, Massachusetts. Petitioner seeks a variance for an additional freestanding sign on the property and requires relief to number of freestanding signs in a BN district where no additional freestanding signs are allowed and one is proposed. Sign height where 12 feet is allowed and 15 feet is proposed, the property is located in a BN zoning district.
Madam Chair, and members of the Board, my name is David Anklees. I'm an attorney practicing law at 246 Andover Street, Street 101 in Peabody, Massachusetts, and I'm here to represent Logan Express in its request for this small, single freestanding sign. Believe it or not, just as a little bit of background, Logan Express obtained a special permit from the City Council, City of Peabody, a few months ago to transfer Logan Express from Route 1 South to the area at the North Shore Shopping Center along Prospect Street. During that process, Logan Express- to represent Logan Express in its request for this small, single freestanding sign. Believe it or not, just as a little bit of background, Logan Express obtained a special permit from the city council, city of Peabody, a few months ago, to transfer Logan Express from Route 1 South to the area at the North Shore Shopping Center along Prospect Street. During that process, Logan Express obtained a, as a result of that process, Logan Express obtained a temporary special permit for a year to see if we could work this out. None of the buildings that exist there now are permanent, everything that is there is temporary. There is a small sign on the temporary trailers that are there identifying the location as being part of Logan Express. There is no freestanding sign existing, and if you review, believe it or not, our ordinance, no pylon signs or freestanding signs are allowed in a business regional district at the North Shore Mall, other than one, which is presently located on Prospect Street at the entrance, if you recall, where the circus was, East Boston, that's the only pylon sign serving the North Shore Shopping Center at this particular point in time. It has shaws on it and another, another tenant. When we made our presentation to the city council, Logan Express, together with the mall, made an effort not to commercialize Prospect Street any further. We told and represented that we would not put any signs along Prospect Street, we represented to the council that we would direct all traffic, bus traffic, from Route 114 and/or Route 128 through the shopping center, and that there would be no truck, uh, bus traffic on Prospect Street. We'd like, we'd like to be able to keep that promise and that representation, and not place a sign on Prospect Street directing people to Logan Express. We don't think that it's appropriate to further commercialize Prospect Street with a freestanding pylon sign. And what we ask for is a very small, four by eight pylon sign located close or close to the roadway as you go by Barnes and Noble, up toward Macy's, it's freestanding and all it states is Logan Express entrance. We ask for that simply because it's elevated, and we found that during the snowstorms, none of the signs that we had were visible throughout the shopping center, creating a bit of a hardship not only for Logan Express, but for those people who are entering the shopping center looking for Logan Express. It's a relatively small sign, and again, it's more directional than anything else, it allows people who enter the mall property from either 114 or 128, or even Cross Street, to see as they circulate the mall, the location and interest for Logan Express. We think that without that sign is a little bit of a hardship, this is, I think, an aid to traffic, helps people find it, and we believe it's appropriate to make this request. Thank you.
So, Attorney Anklees, if I may, you received a special permit from the city council, correct?
Correct.
So during those hearings, why did you not ask for this sign then?
We did not ask for the sign at that point in time because we weren't sure as to how everything was going to lay out, and we knew that we could get a particular sign on Prospect Street, but in talking with the then-city councillor, councillor Sheris, and with the other councillors, we felt as though we would do whatever we could to keep it kind of low key, and as I said, stay away from Prospect Street, not add to the one pylon sign that serves the mall.
Okay, so, um, so, the, the little purple sign on Prospect Street is staying, is staying.
Yes, the little purple sign on Prospect Street can be removed.
No, 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 that, that, that's fine, and, and there are a few, a few other little signs directing people, those are staying.
Those are all removable, they're not permanent.
Right, but, but they're staying.
Yes, correct.
So, and the sign you want is going on 114?
No, the sign we want, if you take a look at the site plan that we submitted in, it was, it's part of the, it's part of the application, I have a blown up copy here, Madam Chair, if you'd like to look at it.
So, it, you said it's, oh, oh, I was thinking of the other, it's going inside the property by Barnes and Noble?
Yeah.
Oh, so it is inside the mall?
It is inside, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I don't like that. I thought it was going on 114 for a minute. So, okay, Attorney Anklees, so this is a sign that's going to be how high in the air?
I believe it reads, you have that on there, I think it's 18 feet?
15 at top.
It's 15, yes, it's 15 feet above, and it's four by eight, which is relatively small.
So-
If there's a freestanding sign already placed, you know, as you enter Prospect Street, when the lights are, why can't you just put what a block sign states? Why do you have to have this on?
This is, this is the, this is elevated, in other words, what we have-
It's elevated, but you have to take into consideration, people that are going to Logan Express, my opinion, I think they know where they're going, A. B, you've got Lifetime Fitness, Lifetime Fitness doesn't have a freestanding sign to tell people where to go, neither does Macy's, neither does whatever else is there, Nordstrom's. So, there are plenty of little purple signs telling people where to go, it's a, it's a very nice piece of property where the buses go. Me personally, I think it's out of place, I don't like it, I think this sign, once again, leads to another sign, another sign, another sign, I mean, I, I don't know, personally, I don't like it.
My response is, is, is very simply, it's, it's the only freestanding sign that is elevated, that can be seen as you circulate through the shopping center. The small signs that you see were not intended to remain, they are-
Be they better?
They can be removed, and they were not intended to remain. This is an attempt to be able to show people who are coming in from Route 128, Cross Street, and/or 114. We have advertised Logan Express as being accessible from 114 and 128, we have-
Why don't you put a sign on 114?
Why don't you put a sign on 114, which is what I was going to say, because today, as I was driving around, I, I thought to myself, first of all, if you're going to North Shore Mall to Logan Express, people are going to come into the mall. Anyway, they're going to find it sooner or later if they've come from the South Shore, but if you're putting the sign for directional purposes, why not put something on 114? Oh, okay, this is where I turn in for Logan Express. Where you're putting it, I think it's unnecessary, and I don't think it's needed.
I, I, I just disagree, Madam Chairman, simply because if you put a sign on 114, you're coming in at 114, you still have to circulate around, and you still can't see the entrance to Logan Express. This sign was the only thing, if you, if you were up there during the snowstorm, you could see nothing referring to Logan Express, this would be the only thing that you could see. It's elevated, it's small, relatively small, and it is just one illuminated sign, there are no other illuminated signs relative to Logan Express.
So, my one comment would be, and I would have to agree with the chairwoman, that this could lead to more and more signs.
And it's illuminated.
The illumination part, too, I was going to speak to, the one hardship I think they would have is, these stores have the name of their store on the building, so this doesn't have a structure, so there should be some way of indicating where that area is, but I don't know if this sign's the appropriate way.
Through the chair. Do you, I guess, I guess the old saying goes, you never know what you got till it's gone, and as soon as Logan Express was gone, I never realized how much I missed it, because I, I think it provides a great, great service. Obviously, I'm a proponent of public transportation, I worked there my whole life, so, um, I don't, I, I have a hard time, and I understand where you're coming from, but when we have businesses and people that want to come to the Liberty Tree Mall, I have, I have a hard time saying, no, you shouldn't be able to have a sign. I mean, I, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't agree that everybody that's going to Logan Express at the, at the, not the Liberty Tree Mall, the North Shore Mall, knows where they're going. I heard it was going to the mall, I've lived there all my life, first time I had to drive up there, I goes, oh, 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 there it is, right over there, and that just proved to me, you need a sign. And, you know, 15 feet is not that high, you talk about illumination, I don't know the time the buses stop, but if I wanted my lights to go out at 10 o'clock, I put a timer on the lights, and they go out at 10 o'clock. It's not a big, hard problem to worry about illumination. Put a timer on it, last bus goes, sign goes out, no one needs to get there anymore. I, I don't know, it's, I, 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 I think it, I think we need it. That's all I'm going to say, thanks.
Madam Chair, I might add that lighting is there 24/7, and so this does not add any extra light. If, if it's something that you think should be reduced in height, we can reduce it a few feet in height. We do believe, however, that it's something that serves a good purpose, and we, we believe that it's, it really is for safety, and, you know, you, you get, you get quite a few people up there who, again, who come down from Beverly, and who come down from Beverly, or Hamilton, or even Gloucester now, who are finding it extremely convenient to use Logan Express, and I believe it's a tremendous service, that if they're unfamiliar with the mall, they're not, this is on the backside of the mall, and again, we're trying to keep people away from Prospect Street, so we're telling people to come in from 128 and 114, and if you come in from 128 and 114, you're not going to see, because it's topography, the small hill, and the fact that all of the mall itself precludes your ability to see the site. It's not until you come around, so we, we honestly believe that this is something that serves a good purpose.
Through the chair, can I make a comment? Okay, thank you. For anybody that thought that I was yelling, please, please don't take it as that, I've known Attorney Anklees for a long time, so I also know that, oh, you're getting up there and here's Dave, we have to speak a little louder when we talk, out of respect for Attorney Anklees, so please don't anybody take it that I was yelling or getting overly excited, I was, I was talking loud, and now we know why, thank you.
Thank you, Costa.
Okay, anybody in the, Chris?
I, I had the privilege to, to use this bus this past weekend, there's an old song, signs, signs everywhere, sign blocking up my scenery, all that stuff, there's far too many of those little, little signs, I was very confused, I drove around three times trying to figure out how to get in here, I was getting dropped off by somebody, there's nothing that tells me you can just go in, drop someone off, and not have to pay to get out. I, I, I think this is a good idea, this sign, I, I just don't like all the other little ones that are all over the place, there's far, far too many little A-frame, whatever the right word is for those signs, I don't have a problem with the height, and I think illuminated needs to be, I, I did it, and I had a difficult time this weekend, and I will support this.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition, matters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Actually, I should close the public hearing, I have one thing to say, and I meant to say, and it is, um, is that I agree with both sides on this, I'm torn, because I do see a potential problem that if we allow this single sign, who else is going to want one? Is it going to be Golfers Warehouse next, is it going to be Leahy? So I think that Keith brought up a, a great point, I think that, not that there's a condition upon this, but at least part of the record, that all these other entities have signs on their buildings, at least I'd say probably 90, some of the stores inside the mall obviously don't, but all the major ones on the exterior do. So I think this is a little bit special in that instance, this, there's no, there's no building to attach this sign to.
Right.
So that's the only thing can differentiate it by looking at it that way there.
Right.
Because I would certainly not be in favor, just sort of have it on the record here, of every single store in the mall being able to say, I want a sign, I want a sign, I want a sign, I, I don't, I don't think approving this is going to open that, I don't think it's going to open that door, I would not be in support of those, this, I think, is a special circumstance, given that they have no freestanding building to put this on. I'll close the public record. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
Brian.
No. Number five.
Number five on the agenda is an application of Andrew Arena for a variance from the provisions of the zoning ordinance 2020 as amended, section 7.2, as it applies to the premise known as 149 Lynn Street, Peabody, Massachusetts, Lot 116-107. Petitioner seeks a variance for an open deck and requires relief to front yard where 20 feet is required and 9 feet is proposed, the property is located in an R1A zoning district.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Andrew Arena, and I live at 149 Lynn Street, Peabody, and I'm applying for a variance for a deck, it says front yard, but it's a corner lot from Lynn Street to Dexter, so we consider it mostly our backyard, but because it's a corner lot, it says the front deck, or front yard, and it'd be attached to the stairs, which already exist, and there's, it's a fenced-in backyard, and the nine feet would be to the fence. It meets the clearing on all other three sides.
Through the chair, what's the, what's the height of the deck?
I don't know off the top of my head, Mike, I think it would be about waist-high.
Okay.
However, it's the height of the current stairs to the door.
Oh, okay, all right.
Through the chair for clarification, is, is there currently a deck there?
Uh, yes, so there, I believe there's some confusion on the builder's part, but he, they did like frame and did most of the work deck, because they were fixing the stairs also, and then they don't, I don't believe they got the permit in time while doing the stairs, so they were told to finish it as a safe, they talked to the building instructor and said, finish it for safety reasons, and go through the formal process still. So the deck currently does exist, because it was completed-
So you built a deck without a permit, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, the builder did, and-
Who's the builder, if you don't mind me asking?
His name is Pat McCaffrey, I believe.
Out of Peabody?
I believe so, yes, and you talked to the-
First, first deck he ever built?
I doubt it.
Anyone that is listening, please, we're going to deny the, these things from now on, you cannot build without a building permit, if you are unsure, call the building department, 532-3000, the building department, I don't even know what number it is, I have a direct line, but this is, this is now getting out of hand, this is ridiculous, I, 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 I just don't understand it. I, I, I just don't understand it. I understand that it wasn't your fault, you hired somebody, you have your trust in those people, but I'll tell you right now, this is not right. This really is not right. I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're doing the right thing now. In fact, let me ask you, why, why are you coming here now? Who told you had, you had to come now?
Well, he relayed to me that we had to get the permit for it, and I contacted, I believe, Carl about it, who then said, "You have to get the building permit first," which he does, so we went, I had to wait for him to go through the whole thing to get the denied permit to then come in for us.
I'm going to tell you, I'm at a loss. I'm really at a loss. This is, and, and I know it's not your fault, you hire these people, you have the trust in these people, but I think maybe we need to stop making a list of the builders that build without building permits.
No, nothing for me. So, motion to close, anybody in favor?
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor or in opposition?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Keith?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Please, you tell that builder to either call the Building Department, or me personally, or just let him know, if he's going to do any of the work in this city, he needs to get a building permit before he nails one nail into a piece of wood.
Yes, ma'am, he's pretty difficult to contact, but I will try.
Thank you, you're all set.
Thank you.
Number six, 13 Paleologus Street.
Number six on the agenda is an application of Alexandra Fiori, care of Attorney John Kelty, for a variance from the provisions of the Zoning Ordinance 2020 as amended, sections 7.1.5, 7.2, 10.5.1, as it applies to the premise known as 13 Paleologus Street, sorry about that, I hacked that up, Peabody, Massachusetts, Lot 086-017. Petitioner seeks a variance to subdivide parcel of land with an existing two-family dwelling on Lot A to create a single-family dwelling on Lot B, with the garage to be relocated from Lot A to Lot B, and requires relief to Lot Area Lot A, Lot Frontage Lot A and B, Lot Width Lot A and Lot B, Front Yard Lot A, Side Yard Lot A, MBLD Lot A and Lot B, accessory structures, size and landscaping. The property is located in an R2 zoning district. Just for the record, I am on the board at the church, which is an immediate butter, so I cannot vote on this.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is John Kelty. I am an attorney with offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts, and I represent Alexandra Fiori of 13 Paleologus Street in Peabody, Mass., and her husband Nicholas Zalotis, also of 13 Paleologus Street in Peabody, Mass. This is an application to subdivide the parcel, allow there to be built in the rear lot, which I have Lot A and B, we're creating Lot A, will be 3,645 square feet. It will house the, I can't, I had cataract surgery today, so I'm having trouble reading my own application. But we've already gone through what the measurements are, and what the, what I'd like to say is that the Zalotis family has owned this particular lot of land immediately adjacent, it doesn't help, immediately adjacent to the church, and they've owned that lot since 1944, when George Zalotis acquired it. Since then, it is passed down in the family, and most recently, it has passed in 2018 to Alexandra Fiori and Nicholas Zalotis. The Nicholas and Alexandra are, have a young family, and they're moving to a house that is out of town. They live in the 13 Paleologus with their aunt Irene. They did acquire the property from their aunt Irene Zalotis in 2018. They are, Irene had acquired it from Victoria Zalotis in 1998, so the, obviously, the property has been in the family for quite some time. Nick and Alexandra are eager to move to their new premises and bring up their family in a larger, a larger house with backyard. They're proposing to move Irene from the existing 13 Paleologus Street, where she lives in an apartment with Nick and Alexandra, and they would construct the home and the 24-by-28 single-family dwelling on 6,628 square feet. The garage, as I indicated in my application, the garage would be moved from the front lot to the rear lot. However, there is no particular need for the garage to be on the premises. If the board were to feel that the garage and the structure would be too much for the rear lot, then we would be happy to jettison the notion of moving the garage. We are, I have noted that the other properties in the neighborhood, there are a couple of subdivisions such as this. Number 17 Paleologus is two families, 17 and a half is a, I'm sorry, 17 and a half is a two-family, 17 is four units, 19 is four units, 14 is four units, and there are several other, there are three units at 16, there are three units at 18, there are three units at number 20, and 25 has two. So we feel that this proposal is very similar, extremely similar, to other conditions that exist in the neighborhood, and have existed for a period of, in excess of 20, 20-plus years, and we're happy to answer questions that the board may have with respect to this application. And with me this evening is Nick Zalotis, who also would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you, Attorney Kelty. So in looking this over, 2022, it's a pork chop lot, correct?
It is sometimes referred to as a pork chop lot, yes.
And we have made it very well established that we don't do pork chop lots in the city anymore, even though 20 years ago, they were allowed. That's all I'm going to say.
Else from the board that would like to speak on this matter?
Thank you, through the Chair. I certainly, I, I understand what you're saying, Madam Chairperson, and I don't disagree. I don't disagree. But I, I'm torn, because I grew up down here. I mean, I grew up downtown, all my friends lived down here, so I know the character of these neighborhoods. And it sort of gives me a little bit of heartburn to say that 20 years ago, these, these people, these.
Kidding.
They came in, no, no, no. They, they came in, and they took an area that probably no one wanted to live in and made it a beautiful area. You go up and down these streets in Ward 3, and, and I used to laugh, you know, when I was on the City Council, and I would have an issue outside of Ward 3, and Council matoures would hammer me. Ward 3 is a different animal, council, you don't understand Ward 3. And fortunately, I did, because I grew up there, so I, I had a little bit of comeback here. But understanding the pork chop issue, all right? If the purpose is to have your aunt live, and, and I'm probably missing something here, but an apartment is a room or suite of rooms used as residence by family, one or more located above a first floor, used for non-residential. So what's preventing us from allowing them to put an apartment above the garage? Then it's one owner, no pork chop lot, no subdivision, no nothing. It's just, we're allowing an apartment, which seems to be allowable in the ordinance, above a first floor used for non-residential purposes. I mean, I'm not telling you that you can't build the house, well, you probably can't, but, but I'm, if you need an apartment, I guess you, we could, if you could compromise and maybe consider that, it might be a consideration. I mean, it's, it's the greatest.
Mr. Ross, that would be two structures, one lot?
Yeah.
Well, which is violation of zoning.
Even.
residential structures, one lot.
Two, oh, ah, okay, all right. Two or more families, or one or more families located above a first floor used for non-residential, oh, so it's, had to be the same building, okay. Could we get a variance against that ordinance and allow an apartment? I, I just know the character of the, I'm, I'm just trying to find a way, you know? Like I said, you know, you look at, you look at the map, and I'm, and anybody who's, who lives there knows, you go up and down any of these streets, Harris Street, Paleologus Street, Tremont, you name it, it's house on top of house on top of house. And the one with the most available land, with most white space, is 13 Paleologus Street, and we can't find a way for this guy to do it. And that, that's probably the frustration of doing that. I, I wonder if we could give a variance. I wouldn't be against that, to put an apartment above the existing garage and do that.
You can't. It's not varianteable.
That's where we frequent law.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Chris? No.
No.
No. Number seven, 1B MacArthur Circle.
Number seven is an application of Haley Garino for a variance from the provisions of the Zoning Ordinance 2020 as amended, section 7.2, as it applies to the premise known as 1B MacArthur Circle, Peabody, Mass., 116-186. Petitioner seeks a variance for an extension of an existing deck and requires relief to side yard setback where 15 feet is required and 10.5 feet is proposed. Property is located in an R1A zoning district.
Good evening, John Garino, 1B MacArthur Circle, Haley's husband, if you're not yet there. The proposed extension of the deck existing right now is at 15 feet, due to the property being a corner lot. The proposed extension, we take it out, four and a half feet additional, it would maintain the same 13-foot length, and this is simply proposed.
Through the Chair, just for clarification, I visited the property, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear. We're not talking about the deck around the pool. We're talking about the deck that's connected to the house, currently.
Anybody in the, in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition, the matter is now before the board. Oh, I didn't see you. Yep, name and address for the record?
Mustafa Salama.
Put, put, put the mic on, please.
Mustafa Salama, 17 MacArthur Road. So if, if, if that extension allowed, that will vastly compromise the privacy and the atmosphere of our outdoor space, but will also have an effect on the future property value of my home. I have lived in this home since 2006, and have worked hard over the last decade and a half, not only to make my home more valuable, but more of a welcoming environment for my family and friends. The proposed deck would have, would leave them and others easily standing in a position that would have them seeing everything happening in my backyard, which is uncomfortable and a violation of my family's property, my family's privacy, completely rendering the fence between us useless. I, in order to build this deck, my neighbor wishes for you to make an allowance in a, in the usual zoning regulation for such a project. I respectfully, I respectfully urge you not to, and hope that you will consider all of the above as a guidance. And again, I, one thing also, I, I don't know what's the neighbor coming next to them, after them. I mean, if that household, I don't know what, I don't know what the neighbor comes after them. Like, I, I just, I just not feel comfortable with being that close to my fence. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in favor or opposition? I just have a question. So you have a shed, you have a shed, right? And it, it looks like that when you extend the deck, it basically comes out to where the, the end of the shed is?
Estimating about that. The shed was previously built before we moved in, I believe, under, if I am anywhere close to accurate, in the either 80s or 90s. That permit, I, I did see. So that if you do reference the shed, the shed actually in itself does come within the 15 feet. And as mentioned, the existing deck, we're not increasing height by any means, so it's already there, and I, I do have windows in the back of the house as well.
All right. No more comments than the matters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please?
Keith?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes, you're all set.
Thank you.
Eight is, which is.
Yes, can we continue?
Yes, you have to read it, yep.
Number eight is an application of CEA 114 Fee LLC for a variance from the provisions of the Zoning Ordinance 2020 as amended, section 11.5.2, as it applies to the premise known as 229 Andover Street, Peabody, Massachusetts, Lot 039-027. Petitioner seeks a variance for a wall sign in a BN zoning district and requires relief to wall sign size where 75 square feet is allowed and 115.71 square feet is proposed. The property is located in a BR zoning district. We have a communication that I'd like to read into the record. It is from Jennifer Robishaw.
I'll make a motion to accept the correspondence and continue to the next meeting.
Second.
Favor? Any opposed? Okay, on to number nine. Number nine, Eight Styles Drive.
Application of Faik Logley and Alba Logley for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2020 as amended, section 7.2, as it applies to the premise known as Eight Styles Drive, Peabody, Mass., 009-080. Petitioner seeks a variance for a proposed open deck and requires relief to front yard setback where 25 feet is required and 20.8 feet is proposed, right side where 20 feet is required and 19.1 is proposed. The property is in an R1 zoning district.
Good evening, my name is Faik Logley. Me and my wife, uh, good evening, my name is Faik Logley. Me and my wife purchased the house in, uh, last November, Eight Styles Drive. Actually, it's under construction right now. We have a permit there, the second floor, and we apply the variance for a front porch, porch to the house. So just, when we have an architect, we didn't know because it was 25 feet landing, and we thought it was 20 feet, and when we applied for permit, building permit, said we need 25, that's why we are here right now, for that reason.
Uh, Carla or Mr. Logie, was this built before a permit was issued?
No.
No?
No.
No, you, okay, you realized you needed a permit.
Yeah, we relied during-
Oh, you have a permit and then you realized you needed a variance?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, I get it. Uh, questions, comments? In the audience, for, against, matters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Pete?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Brad? Yes, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now, you're welcome. Uh, the legal ad for-
The next item on the agenda is a special meeting, number one. It's an appeal to the Conway for the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, Housing Appeals Committee pursuant to MGL 40B, Section 22, and CMR 56, um, 56.059B by 40 Oak Street Development LLC, as it applies to the premise known as 40 Oak Street, Peabody, Mass., 095-089X. We've been giving three correspondents to add to the record. Uh, one is a March 16th, 22 Hancock NOI memo, one is a March 22 Hancock Stormwater Report, and one is a March 17th, uh, 2022 Hancock Revised Plans.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the applicant's request to continue to May 16th.
So moved.
All in fa, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I now need a motion to accept the correspondences that we just read in.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I now need a motion to accept the correspondences that we just read in.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Um, I just have one thing to ask and to say. Um, I think it's important we look at these EBA rules and make a small change. Um, we do, we adhere to the deadlines of late correspondence, however, the abutters do not get the correspondence when everybody else does. So I'd like to know if you think it's fair that the abutters can put their comments the Thursday before the Monday meeting by noon, because a lot of times, they just don't get the notification of the variance in time for those 12 days.
Through the chair, I, I think that that's fine. A lot of people do show up at the meetings, actually, to express their opinions, but if they want to put something on the record, and, and their way of getting notice is, is obviously different than the people that are actually filing for relief, so I, I think that's appropriate.
So the Thursday before the Monday meeting by noon for abutters, and then it won't be late? We all set with that? We good?
Yep.
While we're making changes to the application, should we consider something on there that says, "Is a building permit required? Have you obtained it?"
Carla?
You can't, you can't file for a variance-
Unless you have a permit.
Without a building permit. Without first applying for a building permit, the process is to apply for a building permit and it would get denied because you need a variance. The only people that don't apply for a building permit is somebody that wants to subdivide a lot of that.
Or somebody that builds and builds and builds, and then decides they need a permit, and then they get a permit, and then they just realize they need a variance. That is beyond our control. Motion to revise the abutter correspondence?
Yes, so moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Second, okay, all right. Uh, one more thing, two things. So our next meeting is May 16th. We are hearing, um, as it looks like right now, three 40B applications and the compromise correspondence application from 40 Oak Street, which was not available, not through the city's fault, this evening. Um, we're going to try to, hopefully, we won't have that many variance applications that evening. Take a nap before you come.
Bring a sleeping bag.
Yeah, or bring sleeping bag. We'll bring coffee. Um, you know, we'll, we'll try to be extremely efficient that evening on those 40B applications, but we have to start, we have to hear them. The other thing is, we do not usually meet in August. I just want you to think about if you think we should meet in August. It doesn't have to be a Monday. Um, we don't want it to interfere with Barry's golfing, but, um, you know, 180 days is what's the ruling from the time that we open the 40B application. If we can adhere to that, fine, but just think about that August meeting.
I think we should.
And, and we, we can discuss it next, next month, maybe find a date, if, I mean, I don't know where I'm going to be in August, but I'm sure I'll be here. Uh, that is it tonight. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Meeting minutes?
Oh, meeting minutes, yes.
Uh, motion to accept the meeting minutes. You don't have the minutes, then we can't accept them.
Then it's motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
That's it, thank you.